Monday, March the 5th, 2018, at 9:00 AM in council chambers. So, we will, is the introduction of light items? There was one?
Yes. I should probably turn on my mic.
Yeah. Could you tell us what that is, please?
Yes, I'd like to discuss council's appetite to send a letter to the Minister of Education to release the rural education study that was done last year.
Is there anyone who would like to? Do we need a second or on that? Thank you. And I see that the school board chair has written a letter.
That's correct.
So, I think we understand what the concern is. Are all in favor of adding that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's added to the agenda. So, could we please have somebody move that the agenda be adopted as adjusted? Thank you. Councilor Rhodes, Councilor Youngberg, all in favor? Thank you. We have two delegations today, and our first delegation is hashtag My Assoius Economic Development Proposal.
You knew that was hashtag? I'm so impressed.
Well, I have no idea what a hashtag means, but I do know that's what it says. It says hashtag there, so I do get that. An economic development proposal, and it's a presentation from Kenton Gilchrist. So, would you like to come up to the microphone, please? And you have something on that Brienne's going to put, Mrs. Hilsen, you're going to put it up?
I just loaded up some stuff. I have, I've talked about it. You went through the package. Do you want me to kind of go through things a little bit? It's 11 pages long. I don't know how long I've got this morning.
Well, I think it's important that a summary be provided.
Okay.
Because we are on Granicus, and people are watching, so they need to know what we're talking about.
Okay. Good enough. All right. So, let's see if I can remember the elevator pitch here then. So, in a nutshell, what I'm trying to do is create a series of economic development geared vignette videos. The idea is to present Assoius as a place to live, a good community, not just a vacation destination. And the tagline in my head is something like, this is Assoius the other 10 months of the year. So, the idea is to attract young professionals and families in a certain demographic to the community as residents, to help bolster the school population, tax base, and the community of media and IT professionals in the South Okanagan. Kelowna has a burgeoning community of these professionals. I think there's an opportunity here in Assoius. There are quite a few people who live here who work in those capacities already, but there's not really a community of people who are working together on things. And so, that's kind of one of the things that we were looking to do as well. The nice thing about this demographic and why we're aiming for these people is that they can, as a general rule, they can probably, if they're moving from Yalstown or Calgary or Toronto, they can afford the types of housing that is available here in town. There's not a lot of housing available for people under a certain demographic, and for better or worse, that's just the case. So, we need to kind of aim for people who can look at houses up near the golf course and on anarchist. They also need to be servicing clientele mainly from outside the community. A community of 5,000 people is not going to support this industry here. So, these people need to be servicing clientele in Vancouver, Toronto, and Calgary, and representing a net influx of capital into the community. Yeah, I think that's the basics. What we're looking to do, sort of, the creative vision, is to create a series of vignettes and to sort of cross-purpose the footage. And what I mean by that is budgets here are always going to be smaller than you're going to have for tourism boards in Swamish or Vancouver or Penticton or Kelowna. And so, what we're looking to do is create as many deliverables, as many assets as possible using the same footage. So, the first tier is a series of day-in-the-life vignettes. So, we're looking at maybe 10, somewhere in that neighborhood, following people who live, real people here in town. We're not looking at scripted things and hiring actors. We want to bring in 40 or 50 community members and get a sense of who tells the story of what it's like to be in Assoius, what day-to-day life is here, here is like, what it's like to raise a family here, what the nightlife here is like, and narrow that down to probably 10 stories that really give a good cross-section of, here's a day in my life. I get up in the morning, I take my kids to kindergarten, I go to my spin class, I go to my job. In the evening, this is where I buy my organic produce, et cetera, et cetera. And we're trying to paint a picture of a community that offers everything that you're used to, if you're coming from Yalstown, for example. You're not going to lose out on your hot yoga, you're not going to lose out on your, you know, there's no Whole Foods, but you can go direct to the producer and get your organic produce here in town. So, that's the kind of thing that we're aiming for, and we figured probably anywhere from eight to 12 videos will cover the gamut of what people wonder about. You know, if you're sitting there in Yalstown and thinking, I'd like a slower pace of life, I don't want to be stuck in the rat race anymore, I want a smaller community to raise my kids in, I wonder if this community can offer me what I need without me having to sacrifice anything. We want them to be able to watch these videos and know by the time they get to the end of it, 100 percent, this is a good move for us. Once those vignettes are completed, then we can cross-purpose those, the footage and the content from those videos to create themed edits. And those become better tools maybe for particular businesses here in town, for organizations like the town, like Destination Assoius, like the South Okanagan Chamber. And they're basically very specific targeted videos tackling nightlife, tackling keeping active in Assoius, activities for the kids, et cetera, et cetera. So, it becomes a much more pointed economic development tool as opposed to more of an organic story. And then the third tier are almost clickbait. I've got one example I can show in a little bit here. They're basically just 30-second ads, so like I said, we're looking to have 40 or 50 people come through the door and tell us our stories. Only 10 of those will probably be selected for the larger vignettes, but everybody has something about this town that they love, whether you've lived here for six months or six years or 60 years. Everyone's got something unique that they love getting up in the morning and doing or experiencing, and those can easily, those stories can be turned into very short 30-second vignettes that can be used as advertisements, so they become click ads on YouTube or Facebook or something like that that play before other videos. And it can be as simple as, you know, I love waking up in the morning as the mist is rising off the lake in the fall, and I head to Jojo's and I get my favorite cup of coffee and read my newspaper and pet the dogs, and that's My Assoius. And that's it. You know, paired with some beautiful visuals, I think that's a really attractive teaser, something that would make people click and say, okay, I want to know more about this community. So, that's it. In a nutshell, that's kind of the vision that we're going for and the deliverables that we're looking for. And then I've got 11 pages of detail on how to go about accomplishing that, so. Any questions right off the top?
Well, thank you very much for, you have a good vision of what you would like to do. I'll put this over here, and I'll just see if anybody has any questions about. So, I had one. YouTube is the way that you would deliver these, or are there other manner of how would people be able to see these other than that?
So, I tried to touch on that in this package a little bit, and I want to make it clear, we're not a marketing company. We're a video production company, film production. We have to keep an eye towards that kind of thing, especially if I'm coming in front of you. You want to know those answers. It's not my expertise, but we've worked on enough of these campaigns to know what marketing agencies are looking for when they're asking for us to produce these assets for them, where they're planning to take them. And in my experience, YouTube is a fantastic resource. It's not as connected maybe on the social media front as something like Instagram. We're trying to make these edits Instagram-friendly. They can only be a minute long. And certainly Facebook. Facebook is becoming more and more powerful when it comes to video and the ability to share video. So, actually having your videos hosted natively on Facebook rather than linked or embedded from YouTube or another site, that's definitely the way to go. And then you've got likes and shares that help spread it around.
Okay.
And I think that was a lot of the, the vision from the get-go is that a lot of the propagation of this material can be very grassroots. Each one of these vignettes would feature, if we're looking at a day in the life, we're trying to tick as many boxes as we can through this person's day. And so, they might encounter five or six businesses here in town. We're not overtly trying to advertise those businesses. What we are trying to do is showcase that that type of service is available here, but inevitably that business is going to want to share that video. Look, we're showcasing here, this is, we own a gym, we own a grocery store, and it's worth checking out when you're here in town, whether you're visiting or living here. So, I think the businesses here in town will probably end up sharing quite a bit as well.
Thank you. Councilor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I went through your written presentation. Seems to have covered pretty much everything that I wanted to know except for you. I'm wondering if you can give us a little bit of a synopsis of some of the things you've done and how you've been engaged in our community in the past and that type of thing? Just a small synopsis would be good.
I should have brought the presentation I did for Destination Assoius. I put some pictures of my kids in there. I don't have them with me today. So, we've been in town for five years. My wife took a job at the high school here back in 2012. We got married the same month that we moved here, and it was very hot and sweaty, but really enjoyable.
And you're still here.
Yeah, still here. So, she runs the drama program there. I had just started my company, so I run a film production company. Technically, it's based out of Vancouver, but it's the two of us that run it together. So, I run the Okanagan office, and we're, have been moving more and more into doing documentary film work. So, we did a mini-series on winemaking here in the valley. It was our first project. We did a documentary on, mini-series documentary on the construction of the racetrack up in Oliver. On the more corporate side of things, we did Oliver's, I forget what they called it now, but their tourism video back in 2016. So, it's been a really good experience for me, actually, because I spend most of my time working in an office by myself, and I don't get up and meet people from nine to five usually during the day. Getting up and filming projects in the community has been really worthwhile for me because it helps me meet people. Whereas my wife gets to meet people all the time and spend time with kids, I don't have that privilege. So, as far as other work we've done, yeah, there's some examples here that I sent. I don't know if you got that in the mail.
Yes.
Maybe if we went to, let's go to the first YouTube link. Let's try it out. Sometimes you just need to get away, disappear for a while, spend some time on your own, travel adventure, and just share a minute or two. So, you're asking about me. This is the type of project we've been working on. This was back in 2009. Swamish launched this before the Olympics. I wrote the music for that. I voiced over one of the projects as well, the mountain biking video. This is the kind of thing we've been working on for a decade. It's sort of our bread and butter. This is our white wine while we start migrating and making our red wine, our film and TV projects. The reason this one is stuck in my head for so long is that although there, that campaign was geared more towards attracting tourists and visitors to the town, I like the framework. That's the type of vignette we're looking at. It's a minute and 15 seconds long. It's scripted, but that's the kind of voiceover we're looking for. We want to have authentic people talking about their experiences here and delivering something very short and sweet, but with stunning visuals. We don't want to, we're really trying hard to, you know, in the budget, I keep going back and forth, want to keep it as trim as possible, but we don't want to have something that looks like it was produced in a small community. So, anyway, back to your question, this is what I do, and we've been trying to keep up with it in Vancouver as much as possible while working on film and TV projects here as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you also mention that you were involved in some way with the River Film?
Oh, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a local, so.
Yeah. I've done a fair amount of work, actually, with Yuri over the years. He used that film. He did a documentary a couple of years ago called Firestorm out of the Alps about the fire in Kelowna, the 10-year anniversary for that, and I did the music for that as well. That's my background, I'm an audio professional, so I came at this industry through music and sound design, and then we got into filming our own projects back in 2013, where they after moving here.
Thank you. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you. Obviously, I'm familiar with your work. I've been a subject in one of your Area 27 videos. My question is, is there an opportunity as far as generating funding or revenue for this project through local product placement? Is that something you've explored, or?
I haven't. I think it's a good question. I think it ends up being very similar conversations to the ones I've been having with people so far. It's about, you know, finding that seed funding, finding that one anchor point that says this is going to get made, and then being able to open up the floor to further discussions like that. I think anytime there's an opportunity to showcase a business in a video, there's an opportunity for financial support there. It's just a matter of being able to say, okay, this is moving forward, and what can we do for you?
Thank you.
Councilor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you got a creative idea. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think the question that wasn't mentioned, you're asking for $10,000, and that kind of give you some seed money. The project looks like about $50,000 here. Have you got other money committed, or how do we sort of guarantee it would get to finish? That $50,000 is raised to make sure it gets finished and doesn't get kind of stopped halfway?
Yeah, I wish I could provide 100 percent guarantee. All I can provide, I think I tried to touch on it quite a bit in here, in this package. I'm just feeling very confident that the small number of meetings I've had so far, it seems like quite a number to me when I think of all the copies I've had and sit-downs with people, but when I think of the number of people in the community and business owners and that sort of thing, I've really just scratched the surface, and every single one of them to date has been very positive. They're enjoying the idea. I've had a lot of conditional commitments, for lack of a better term, of people saying, yeah, if this gets going, we want to be a part of it. I think at this point, I'm just, you know, it's just kind of at the point where it just needs to get started. One of the things I think I mentioned here as well that I realized is, you know, we're planning to bring in 40 or 50 people to do these interviews, and we'll do them all before narrowing it down and deciding who's working well on camera, what stories are covering the cross-section of topics we want to cover. I think just having those conversations with people, like I mentioned, I work in an office by myself. I've been doing that for five years here. I'd say the vast majority of people in town still don't know who I am, don't know what I do, don't know what sort of facilities we have here. Just getting those people through the door and being able to have those conversations, that's an excuse to publicize the project more and to showcase what we're trying to do here. I think that'll drum up more support, more interest. I'd say 50 percent of the funding is already soft-committed.
And I think it's great you're working with the high school students. That'll help them with their education, their future dreams of working in this type of industry. And I see you've got quite a few professional-type people that's kind of come to the table in kind to help support this, so I think that's a great idea.
Since, just, I should mention as well, since this proposal was sent in, I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the, with representatives from the South Okanagan Chamber, and they've expressed an interest to help not only support the production and helping to find the right people to come in and do the interviews, but also, once it's produced, that was one of the big questions we had was, like I mentioned at the beginning, we're a film production company, and so, once these assets are produced, what do you do with them? How do you find sort of a return on investment in getting them out there? And I know the answers to that. I know it can cost money over and above this, and the chamber said that's something we would be very happy to support. So, if that helps at all, they're there.
Thank you. So, could we have a motion to bring back a report, perhaps, from staff to have a look at this and see whether this would work or not? So, Councilor Youngberg, are you making that motion? Councilor Rhodes? Is that okay? Did you get that, Mrs. Hilsen? Well, we're going to have a staff report brought back. All in favor of that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next guest is Helena Conance, and she is a counselor from the city of Penticton, but she's also a director on SILGA, the South Okanagan Local Government Association. So, she's here to give us a bit of a pep talk. So, welcome, Helena.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McCordough, and all of council, and thank you, Ms. Hilsen, for setting this up and staff. Thank you so much for having me today. It's really nice to be here with you in your council chambers, which I've never been before, so very nice. Nice to see other people under the gun besides me. No, besides us. No, no, it's great. I'm here, as Mayor McCordough mentioned, to just talk quickly with you about SILGA. We're, I'm a director on the board and have been for the last few years, and so, as a director, the directors are going throughout our district or throughout our region and doing road shows, just to remind the different council and boards what SILGA is and if you have any questions about it. And as you know, the convention is approaching, so many of you know that, so it's a good timing for that. So, as you can see, I have a few pictures up here. So, the mission statement for SILGA is basically, we work with to represent each community within the BC Southern Interior Region and to provide a strong and effective voice on common issues and regional initiatives. So, we just really feel that speaking as, together, we have a larger voice for issues that are important in our region. As a board, we meet six times a year, and we vary, we try to vary our locations throughout the SILGA region, and we have, I don't believe, not, since I've been on, we've come to Assoius, so we'll have to at some point in the future.
We did have a SILGA convention here, I think, some years back, before I was involved too.
And we also have our executive meetings, so, in different communities. So, it's a way for all of us to continue to visit the different regions. So, if you switch the, it's, so the, these are who is, these are the list of names of people throughout the region who are on the SILGA executive, and as you see, it varies among many communities. This is changing this year in that we are not going to have an electoral area rep this, coming up in the next, during the convention is when we have the election, and we're going to have instead seven directors at large, but at least one of them has to be, must be from the electoral area. So, it's, I think it's a good change. And I also wanted to mention that it's, I really encourage people to run for the SILGA executive. It's a really good way to look at the bigger picture and our region as a whole, and great to have people move in from different communities and give their viewpoint. So, there are a few people who are not running this year also. I know that for certain, so I think I really encourage those who are, have an idea of doing that, that, to try it for a year and see how you like it. I know that Mayor McCordough mentioned four of you are going to the SILGA convention this year.
Three of us.
Three of you are going, which is great, and it'll be really great to see you there in Revelstoke.
Helena, can I interrupt?
Sure.
But there are three people on the SILGA executive right now are from the RDOS. Tony Boot, Helena, and Carla. So, we're well represented in this part of the valley.
Thank you. Yes, you're right. That's really, is really important. When I first got on the executive a few years ago, I was the only one from our regional district. So, it's really nice to see that we are fully represented now. So, the, if you go yet to see the area, the geographical area, we have a huge area from Lilawet to the west, Revelstoke to the east, you know, north of Clearwater, and of course, down here in Assoius, and all the way to Princeton. So, it is a really large area with lots of different issues. So, trying to find common issues is always, common themes is always, can be, can be a challenge, but I think it's worked out really well. These are all the SILGA members right here listed. And so, then if you go to what is our purpose? So, again, to speak for one voice, as one voice in the region, so with, for different local issues, to promote and advance these issues to UBCM. So, again, one community coming forward with an issue can sometimes be neglected or ignored, and, but as a whole, as a region, it seems like the ministers listen more, and sometimes the officials that are attending UBCM listen a little more too. And also, some of the same issues will be presented by a community to a minister and then also by SILGA. So, it's like we're pushing, 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 and for some of the, some common issues. And they can be, you know, any changes, of course, in regulations, government policy, anything that's, that is a concern. And it also is a way of coordinating communication between all levels of government and other government associations throughout BC. So, again, as, since I've been on UBCM, we've met with the premier every year, that we've met with ministers. We spend our time at UBCM really working for the issues that you have brought forward. So, our goals this year, our goals right now are to identify common issues that all of us have, as I mentioned, and to champion these issues to UBCM and to senior governments. We also work on education, so sometimes you'll see that we'll be promoting professional development and educational get-togethers or meetings, and so, you'll see that sent to your, to your email at times. And we usually make it very, very affordable, sometimes like $25 a day, and that includes lunch, but it can be some really, really good issues for, that, that especially we see come up, when, for example, during conventions and stuff, we'll see that, we usually have a whiteboard up at the convention, what is it that your biggest concern is, and we take note of those concerns, and then we try to put some educational topics together. And so, again, the next, wait, how do we achieve our goals? Yeah. So, we, so, again, we try to, we're on this roadshow. That's how we are engaging prior to conventions. We engage our membership on issues that are affecting them. We encourage our members to submit resolutions for the annual SILGA convention and for discussion and support at the UBCM convention, and continue to increase communication with senior levels of government ongoing throughout the year. The 2017 SILGA initiatives are, of course, you know, you know about their Quagga and Zebra must fight that you have been fighting for also, and again, this has been coming from all directions, and I think that it's really making a difference. So, congratulations for your council also for pushing this. I think that we're going to make a difference and hopefully avoid a catastrophe. We are continuing to work with IHA and provincial government for recruitment of doctors and nurses and practitioners and other medical professionals in our area, which I know you have also been pushing for. And, and of course, we are lobbying for review of educational funding, especially in regard to small communities and retention of schools. Again, something that I heard mentioned this morning, again, which is really prevalent throughout our entire association, and is being repeated over and over again. And these initiatives are for 2017, in 2018, we'll, we might continue with the same initiatives or veer off on other initiatives, depending on what are, what is, what we hear from our, our associations or from our members. The 2018 strategic plan goals right now are, of course, housing challenges, which everybody seems to have as a common issue, infrastructure, waterways and services, and of course, marijuana legalization, which is affecting every community right now, and taking a lot of our time, taking a lot of council's time, board time, and staff time. So, that's going to be an ongoing issue now for quite a while. The 2018 SILGA convention in Revelstoke, there's just a few highlights mentioned here, including some of the tours, CEO performance reviews, one on speech writing and campaigning, which could be timely for every, all of us, or not, who knows? And art and lighting, business licensing for electoral areas, which is really important, especially with the marijuana legalization coming forward. That's, that's a very big issue for everyone, and the possibilities for tech and innovation in all our areas, which we heard about in our previous presentation too, which is exciting. The convention keynote speakers, here are a couple of the speakers, David Allison and Ivan Coyote, and then, or Yvonne, I'm not sure how that's meant, how that's pronounced. Benefits for those that aren't going yet, and maybe you could still want to go, the, of course, we're going to have the resolution debate. And last year, we didn't have much debate, and we heard from our members that we really want more debate or more, talking more about the resolutions that are want more debate or more, talking more about the resolutions that are coming forward. Thought-provoking educational speakers, and of course, the most important thing, networking with your peers, so that we aren't working in silos. And that is pretty much it. And does anyone have any questions about the Southern Interior Local Government Association while I'm here?
Thank you very much, Helena. We appreciate your enthusiasm about this, and I know that, that the members of the Silga Board do a great job of meeting and discussing all the issues, so we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. One of the things that's always amazed me about Silga is the size of the area that's covered and the diversity of almost every aspect of it. You go from Assouias to mountains and deserts and all different kinds of environments, and one of the things that's always frustrated me about Silga is being able to collaborate with people from those other areas. You kind of touched on it a little bit, and I'm wondering if there's been any in-depth discussion about how to bring it together, so that we can experience some of the things that go on in, in other areas within Silga and that type of thing.
I think it's a really good question. I think there is a balance between, everyone is so busy that sometimes when they go to these conventions or when they're, we're speaking to them through Silga, they want to talk about the issues that are actually affecting them right now. There'll be ideas that come forward that are very, very centralized, one community or two communities, and then we have to think about, well, you know, how do we, as, we have one employee, by the way, so, and, so, how do we handle, you know, these specific issues that maybe will be only one community as opposed to ones that affect everyone, all of our communities in some way? I'd like rural education, or even for us, the Quagga Mosses affect so many communities along the waterways here, and it will affect the whole province, really, if it, if the disaster comes. So, I think that, the, one of the things that, again, happens at the Silga Convention is that you, hopefully, you, you don't just sit at the table with your council, and you sit and talk, and you talk with other people at the, at the convention. And that's tough, I know, because it's, it's comfortable, it's nice to be out with the people socially, with the people you're working with, and also working hard always, of course. But I think it's important to, we have thought about, you know, forcing people at some of the events to sit with others and that type of thing, but I think that really communicating with the other people at the convention about what's happening in their community is important. And it's also, I think, very important during the resolution debate, that we actually have a debate, we actually talk about those resolutions, so you can find out why someone's bringing something forward about Greyhound busing, or why someone's bringing someone, something forward about, you know, different issues that are coming forward that you didn't even know really was that big of an issue, and yet, wow, this, this is important, yeah, that's good to know about what's happening in that community. So, I think the resolutions are when that can really come forward.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, thank you very much, Helena, and we look forward to seeing you there, and thank you for being part of the organizing committee and getting this, and coming around and telling us about it.
All right, thank you. And I just want to say that it was, there was snow, a lot of snow on the ground this morning in Penticton from last night, but as I headed south to the warmest place in Canada.
Of course.
It was balmy and nice out. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a report from Mr. Dinwiddie on the condition of Town Hall.
Thank you, Madam.
Are we safe this morning? That's all I want to know.
Go right away.
My office apparently is one of the worst, but I, I'd just like to say before you start that we did have somebody in from Joe's Plumbing the other day, and he went down below, and looking at some of the issues there, and he said, "You'll be pleased to know that there's only a three-foot drop under your office, whereas there's a six-foot under some of the other places."
It's twice as good.
It's comforting to know.
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. For the past several years, the administration building for the town of Assouias has experienced numerous and repetitive issues with several aspects of the building's structure. Leaking roofs and sagging floors have created safety concerns for both staff and visitors to this historic symbol of Assouias. In December of 2017, David Naren and Associates Limited was hired to perform a condition assessment of the existing Town Hall in order to determine if the building was worth renovating or if it would be more cost-effective to simply replace the existing structure. David Naren and Associates Limited have now completed their condition assessment of the Assouias Town Hall, and the results are summarized below. The DNA report identified several health and safety liabilities and risks associated with continued use of the existing Town Hall building, some of which are, and these are some of the ones that they included. Architecturally, there is inadequate or non-existent fire separations and fire-resistant ratings on suspended floors and load-bearing walls throughout the building. This is a fire safety risk for building occupants. Structurally, there is rot in the floor framing in the northwest corner of Town Hall under the mayor's office. The extent and significance of the rot will need to be confirmed in order to understand the impact on safety. There is evidence of potential water ingress into the wall on the west side of the fire hall. There is a chance of there structural damage to concealed wall framing. The guardrail along the stairwell in the upper floor of the fire hall is also unsafe. Mechanically, the domestic cold water piping has had recent instances of freezing. There is risk of future damage to the building should the cold water piping freeze in the future. The air quality in the building is negatively impacted by the lack of adequate mechanical ventilation provided by the existing system. The DNA report in Section 4.2 identified several components and systems in the existing building which would have to be improved in order to continue the use of this building. Some of the areas requiring repair are: the roof structure above the north end of the fire hall should be reconstructed due to existing deficiencies and safety concerns; the reinforcement of Town Hall main floor structure and possibly upper floor structure will be required to satisfy current live and partial partition load requirements in the Building Code; in some cases, concrete foundation walls were observed to have no footings; the existing building does not comply with current National Building Code of Canada 2015 with respect to a standing seismic activity; a complete replacement of all mechanical systems in the building is required due to their current age, anticipated lifespan, performance, energy efficiency, and code conformance. The DNA report states, "It is our opinion that it is not feasible to initiate a major renovation to the existing Town Hall building due to the anticipated scope of work, magnitude of costs, and disruption that would be involved. It is likely that a new building could be constructed at a lower cost than initiating repairs and renovations to the existing building." The executive summary, a summary of findings, recommendations, a cost summary estimate are all attached for your review. A paper copy of the entire report is available in the event, and it's 241 pages long, so it's a little long. In the event that council, the members of council would wish to review the report in its entirety, electronic copy of the report will be placed on the website after this council meeting. This report was simply provided to council for your information. We have no particular recommendations. Administration recommends, however, that the project, that this project be included in 2019 capital budget planning discussions to consider funding for feasibility study for a new administration building. And I might want to add that what we did do recently is we did tender the repairs to the fire hall north roof and for the Town Hall front entrance. We did tender that, council gave us permission to do that a little while ago. It went out to tender, we received zero bids on that particular project. I then extended the closing date for that project, or three or four more days. Late Friday afternoon, we received one bid. This is from a contractor from Penticton. They are the Maxim Constructors are the contractor, they're the ones who did the work on the Public Works Office renovations. They did find work up there. They did submit a bid, and it comes in at 54% under the budget for this project. So, if you're, if, like I said, council has already given us approval, but what we will probably do is then recommend that Maxim start work. They will be able to do those immediate repairs to the fire hall north roof and the front entrance roof starting March 15th. They anticipate it would take two weeks to get it done.
Well, thank heavens, we got a bid.
We did get a bid, yes.
Somebody was interested in doing this. That's pretty scary when nobody wants to do it.
No.
Yeah. Thank you. So, how do we proceed from here? Do we ask for a report from?
Well, I think at this point in time, I think the recommendation is, is just that this is being provided as information. We know that we will have to deal with this, if not in the short term, certainly in the long term. At this point in time, you know, the budget has been done for 2018, for all intents and purposes. So, my sense is that this should be a major point of discussion for 2019, that it be included in, that steps be initiated and, starting in 2019, towards the construction of a new building. And whatever way, shape, or form it takes, but at least the planning will, we'll start. My sense is that if we start planning in 2019, probably within, I'm hoping it won't take as long as the fire hall planning process, but my sense is we would target for the, a new building being completed probably within three or four years. Based on, on the reports, they, they identify that, you know, for example, in year one, probably 2019, the town should be putting in over $300,000 into this building. The year after that, I, I think it's a hundred and some thousand, so there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of building that have to go into the maintenance of the building. So, the 2019 discussions will be focused on value-added, and certainly, you know, having a, a longer view, vision of a new building in, in whatever form it takes is, is, I think, something that will be the challenge of, of the new council.
So, it seems from this report that there are some structural changes and various things that need, should be done immediately. Do the two things that were just identified solve that problem for this year? I mean, there may be, we may have to adjust the budget and do some of the things if they're, if it's unsafe, or are we, with doing those two things, are we okay until we deal with this next?
Well, there are other things that are wrong with the, with the building. The two immediate concerns are the fire hall roof on the north end of the building, in the front, and then the front entrance. If we can get those two fixed, there may be a few other things that we have to tidy up and do. Some of it can be done, Operational Services can do some of the repair work, but not all of it. The major component is the, the whole fire safety thing.
Yes.
It, I don't, I think that's a bit beyond the scope of Operational Services to fix, but we, it's something to look at in 2019. I don't know if we need it for 2018.
Okay.
Now, if the earthquake hits, the building falls down, we're good, so.
Okay. Councilor Rhodes. I'd forgotten, I hadn't seen you for a while.
Yeah, well, soon they forget. So, as you read through this report and you get down to the numbers part of it, and that little section that you have on there, those numbers are profound and they're staggering for all of us. When you come from larger communities and you look at three and four million dollars, it's nothing, but to us, it's a monumental project that we're having to take on. I do have a, I have one question, and I'm wondering if it can be part of our future reporting, about the possibility of a partnership with this project. Many of the Town Hall projects in our province are highly successful when you partner up with developers and that type of thing, that may want to add a commercial aspect to a Town Hall development, so I'm hoping that'll be, you know, at least a part of it or an option that we can look at in the future.
Certainly, you know, that's, I think that's part of what the feasibility study process is, to identify what are the options, what are the opportunities that, that may exist. And I think one of, you know, again, just being speculative, you know, one of the advantages that we have here in town is the fact that there is a block of land here that is available for, you know, a building to be built, whatever form it takes, while we can continue to be housed in, in this one. So, you know, that'll be the challenge, is to come up with, you know, what is the, what is the best type of scenario to be developed.
Go ahead.
In addition to that, I'm wondering, so you read through this report, and it looks like it's all bad. There's not really nothing positive that you can get out of this. The building will eventually collapse and cause all kinds of calamities that, you know, are less than favorable for us in all respects. I'm wondering about the wisdom of waiting another year. Is there some way that we could speed this up a little bit? You know, when you read things about fire safety and roofs and floors collapsing and that kind of thing, these are not things that are, you know, usually, they don't get better. You know, they have a tendency to get a lot worse, and will there be an opportunity for us to maybe, you know, we can always do budget amendments, those are always open to us, and I'm just wondering about prolonging, you know, a full calendar year. I mean, some of these things sound just terrible.
I guess my response to that would be, you know, if council approves the current budget, what we could do is monitor where our projects come in, you know, as, as Mr. Dinwiddie has said, potentially our roof project will be coming in under budget, and if we get a number of those projects that come in under budget, the potential is there to bring back a recommendation to council that we initiate some type of planning process in this year within the existing, you know, budget, or an allocation of reserves or, or, you know, or contingency funding could probably pull, off the top of my head, I'm just, you know, I think the first study that, you know, the first level of planning that we did with the fire hall was probably in a neighborhood of $120,000. So, we would have to try and target, I think, that particular type of number within our savings process.
My point is, is the wisdom of waiting another year does not settle well with me.
Well, it doesn't with me either, so, but I'm trying to work within the, the current budget that has been established. And if, but if council wants to try and identify, say, that amount of money, we would have to either cancel some projects within the existing budget, or council could pass the existing budget and we would do an amendment, probably review some of the projects and, and make those changes.
Okay. Councilor Campbell.
Thank you. I think in the, in the bigger, the bigger picture in the long term, looking at our community assets and some of the potential projects down the road are important when we look at this project, from the police station to ambulatory to all of it. And I'm hoping that the time spent on the feasibility study really won't be zeroed in on, on, on just the Town Hall, but looking at some of the other assets that we either own or don't own, that can sort of be brought together into one project, assuming we have time and you stay on the main floor of the building, which would be good.
Not in the basement?
I just, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not looking at another project five years down the road of an aging facility, or in a situation with a police station where we're looking at big dollars again, that we look at everything right now as part of this, not just Town Hall.
I just said that to Mr. Remanko a little while ago, same thing, I had it written down, exactly the same. So, I think we need to look at all of those options and see what we can do, because it's pretty scary. Yeah.
That'll be part of the feasibility study, though, wouldn't it not?
Well, it's based, based on the terms of reference.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be based on the terms of reference. You know, the feasibility study takes us directions from the terms of reference, and if, if that would be the, the direction of council, when we get into that particular process, certainly would be built in. You know, and, and again, you know, based on further discussion with council, we may get into a discussion on, you know, whether or not there's, you know, 3P opportunities or there's commercial development opportunities that would be built in, but, you know, the door's wide open right now.
So, do we need a motion to, or is this just for information?
And, and at this point in time, I, I don't see a need for, the only motion I would say is this, that this would be taken as, as information, and if there is a desire to take a look at some budget amendments, the, the bylaws are coming to council this afternoon. I would suggest that that particular discussion happen during the course of those, of those discussions.
How bad is the roof? I could have sworn I heard a bird in here a second ago.
Ah.
I think that was a turkey.
Well, it's bad.
Sorry, Richard.
So, could we, could somebody move that, that we look at it that way? Okay, thank you. Did you get that, Ms. Hills? Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded that we, that we have a look at this in terms of budgeting later on today. Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you very much. So I'm glad that you're not here asking for more money today, but not yet, okay?
The day's early.
The day is early, for sure. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is a letter that was suggested by Councilor Campbell. Would you like to?
Thank you.
Would you like to explain that a little bit?
Yeah. Going back a year and a bit ago, when we were faced with a potential school closure, part of the rural education enhancement funding that came through was a study that was, that was done on, on education in rural communities. I know M.L.A. Larson was a part of putting that study together. The study was supposed to have been released a while back and, and never was, and is being said to be cabinet-only now. This was a publicly funded study with a very specific purpose, so we understood the long-term viability of our, our schools and rural areas. There's been requests to release that letter that, that have not been answered yet. School District 53, as well as a few other school districts, have written letters to the Minister of Education requesting the release of that study. The reason I feel we need to write a letter is, part of that entire process we went through regarding the potential closure of OSS, it was stated that as a municipal council, we weren't as engaged and in the know as we could have been or should have been as far as, from facilities budgeting to enrollment issues and future enrollment. And I think the fact that the study was publicly funded, was said to be, was supposed to be released to the public, and for some reason, isn't being released, concerns me. So I'd like to be supportive of the school district's letter and write a similar letter to the Minister of Education and the premier, requesting the release of that study immediately.
Good. Thank you. So do we need a motion to bring that to this afternoon's meeting, or can it be done, handled this morning?
I think, given that there's no, I think the nature of the topic is we don't need any additional paperwork to be identified, or, you know, a staff report relative to options, I would suggest that since it's administrative direction as opposed to any expenditure of funds, that council could direct the administration to, to develop a letter of that nature for the mayor's signature.
Good.
So I'll make that motion, and if you haven't seen it already, I can, I can send you a copy of the letter.
If you could, please.
I can do that.
The one that, that Sarah wrote?
That School District 53 wrote.
Yes, I saw it somewhere, so it's got to be on something. Are you seconding that? Thank you very much. All in favor of writing that letter, having staff do it? Thank you very much. And I think that's, that's all of our business for today, so we need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please. Councilor King, Councilor Campbell, all in favor. Thank you very much, and thank you to, to the people who are sitting there listening and taking notes.